Being to order for Tuesday, October, I'm sorry, Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Planning and zoning.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. I need to, I, we need to make a motion to amend the agenda. So I will need a motion to.
I'll make a motion.
Add consideration of a partial split at 220 Arthur Street.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Thank you. So we will add that under number eight, and it will be letter E. Now it's time for.
Oh, we gotta take a vote on that first.
Oh, sure, let's take a vote.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Heather. Now it's time for citizen comments on agenda-related items. Citizens may come forward, and they have five minutes to tell us what they think. Is there anybody who would like to step up forward to the podium? No public comment? Okay. All right, hearing none, we'll go on to unfinished business. Consideration of ordinance 21-.
Consent agenda?
... in lieu of taxes for.
We have to do the consent agenda first. That's okay.
Consent agenda. All items, all agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of ordinance, payroll, invoices, notification of regarding next work session, consideration of the annual Manistee Lions White King fundraiser. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moving on to.
Oh, we have to do a vote.
Oh, let's do the vote.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Welcome, city manager interim. Let's move on to unfinished business. Consideration of ordinance 2116, payment in lieu of taxes for housing. Ritz Park Village Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership has proposed renovations to its Ritz Park Apartments complex. It has requested the adoption of a payment in lieu of taxes ordinance that provides for a 2% pilot. Additional payments under a municipal service agreement and a road resurface agreement were considered separately by council at the August 4th, 2021 meeting. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. This ordinance was introduced at the August 4th, 2021 meeting and could be adopted at this time. At this time, council could take action to adopt ordinance 2016, payment in lieu of taxes for housing. Do I?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Discussion?
Ed, I just have one question. The contract only had a few small pieces in it. Am I to assume that the employee handbook covers his other benefits, like sick time and that kind of stuff? Is that in the employee handbook? Or does he not have any because it's not in the contract?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Bachman.
Ordinance for Ritz Park.
Like I said, I'll get back to you on the other.
Okay.
Any discussion on the Ritz Park pilot? Hearing none, please take the vote.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to new business. You might want to make notes. Consideration of employment agreement with William Gamble for the city manager position. The city previously extended a conditional offer of employment to city manager candidate William Gamble. The offer was contingent on a pre- improve, uh, pre-employment physical drug screen, background check, and council approval of an employment agreement. The first three conditions have been satisfactory addressed. The interim city manager has negotiated an employment agreement with Mr. Gamble, and he has agreed to the terms. At this time, council could take action to approve an employment agreement with William Gamble for the city manager position.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So is that a?
Now I have a question, Ed. In this contract, there are only four, a few pieces, pay, vacation, didn't mention sick time or benefits. Are those covered in the employee handbook?
Yes, they are. He has the same benefits as the department directors.
I assumed he did, but I just didn't see it spelled out. I wanted to find it. So I know his wife should do have a baby this year, so when that comes, how'd you get time off for that?
So in the contract, I inserted two weeks vacation between the time of his employment and the end of the year, which is a little bit more than what it'd be, would be if it was prorated, in anticipation that he might want to take some time off. But he also certainly would be able to take sick time off, just like the department heads could for, for the birth of the child.
He'll do sick time for that on vacation.
Yeah, he could do whichever one he wanted, so.
I'll clarify that in this meeting. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, please take.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of amending the city's personnel policy and procedures manual for sick time. The sick time policy for non-union, non-department heads is included in the city's personnel policies and procedures manual. Each of the four union groups also has a sick time policy in their respective collective bargaining agreements. The non-union group has requested a change to the policy to better align it with the benefits received by the union groups. The two proposed changes will allow for a greater payout for unused sick time at retirement or death, and an annual payout for unused sick time above a capped amount. These changes would reduce the disparity between employee groups by being affordable for the city. At this time, council could take action to approve an amendment to the city's personnel policy and procedure manual for sick time. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Discussion?
How many employees, Ed?
The employees that would be impacted by this are currently eight, one of which is a permanent part-time.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else hearing? Guess we'll take a vote.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of the local revenue sharing board grant applications. The local revenue sharing board, the LRSB, distributes 2% money from the Little River, from Little River Casino. The deadline for the 2021 cycle two applications is Friday, September 3rd, 2021, at 5:00 PM. City staff has prepared two grant applications for submission to the LRSB. This agenda item will include two separate motions, one for each grant application. At this time, council could take action to authorize submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for police department patrol jackets in the amount of Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Would Chief Glass like to say anything about this grant?
Certainly, Your Honor. We're requesting is patrol jackets, hats and gloves, basically winter equipment for the officers. Our current patrol jackets are about 12 years old. This type of jacket that we're getting has an interior layer and an external layer, so our officers can wear it more months out of the year. So it's, it's an internal fleece and an external shell. So when we get into May, hopefully not June, but in the fall, they can take the external shell off and still wear the jacket. So it makes it more versatile for us. One of the things we're also requesting is having reflective materials sewn on the outside of the jacket for officer's safety when we're on traffic or in the highway, for better visible. So those are some of the pieces we're asking for.
Isn't that required down the highway?
For prolonged, yes.
Okay. So it's not like, it's not like an excessive option, it's something you have to have?
Correct. And so as far as that piece with the officer's safety visibility, and if we're doing any kind of stealth operation, it allows us to shed that and also be stealth.
Chief, do they still wear those vests that we used there years ago with the shiny stuff on at night for?
Yes, they're required to wear vests if they're conducting any type of traffic detail, especially on the highway. We have the old jackets that are high-vis green, but now we've kind of, over the years, again, they're 12 years old, so they're due to replace.
What do your officers do with the used jackets? Is that just their personal attire that they can do what they want with?
No, nothing that's paid for, but the city funds as their personal attire. To answer your question, Your Honor, I don't really know. First of all, is make sure we get the patches off of them, but I would guess that I would like to keep a surplus in case we have significant exposure to blood or fires, we have those available too.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Anybody else have any questions? For the chief? Heather, can you take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
At this time, council could take action to authorize submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for the fire department rope rescue team kit with four-atom rescue harnesses in the amount of $11,911. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Jim and Aaron, okay. Any discussion? Let's invite Fire Chief Cameron up, so he can tell us all about this rope harness, because I'd like to know more about.
Thank you, Your Honor. What we're looking at doing is replacing a approximately 20-year-old system that's been in place. So some of the pieces that we have will be augmented because they're hard metal, they're not, they don't really expire. What we're looking at replacing with the harnesses and the rope, which is susceptible to dirt and debris and stuff like that, that's getting old. It'll also help build our kit that we have currently to be a little larger, so that's the overall goal, is replacing rope that is excessively old.
Where do you anticipate using it?
What we have this four set up is for assault. We use it also with the city and DPW as far as a confined space rescue complement. So it's used for city uses as well as for factory use, and we do work as well outside of the county. We've been starting to do a few trainings with Manistee Township and kind of implementing them into our training as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Hearing none, Heather, can you take role?
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Historic District Commission, the Pay Commission, and the Tree Commission. Mayor and manager appointments require a motion second and council voted support. The following applications have been received. For the Downtown Development Authority, one vacancy for an at-large member, unexpired term ending 6/30/2022, city manager appointment.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to appoint Kelly Greavy to an unexpired term on the Downtown Development Authority Board expiring June 30th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
She beat you, yeah. Okay. I have a motion and a support. Heather, you want to take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Congratulations, Ms. Greavy. Welcome to the DDA Board. Next, we're going to take on consideration of a parcel split at 220 Arthur Street, parcel number 515117470705. B&amp;L Capital Investments LLC would like to split this parcel at 220 Arthur Street, 515117470705, so they can sell the hotel on a smaller parcel. The parcels meet zoning requirements, and the city assessor has confirmed that the split is legal and allowable. The City of Manistee Planning Commission gave their recommendation of approval to the city council for the parcel split request to continue. At this time, council could take action to approve the parcel split of 20, or of 220, 220 Arthur Street. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question with this, with the letter that we got saying that they understand it's not conforming use. That's going to be in that language, right?
We'd have to amend it.
I wasn't sure if you were going to ask a question. Could you say it again? I'm sorry.
The letter that we received this afternoon, that's in the language that it's non-conforming?
In the language of?
If we agree to the split?
Right, so, so how, I think, I think the best way for us to just go about this is we allow for the split. Bob has already picked up the special use permit, he's going to bring it into compliance very quickly.
Okay, that's all I.
But we do want to amend the motion to include the requirement for the special use permit to be in compliance, correct? That's how it was read here. The city council could approve the split with the understanding that a non-conforming use on the parcel be brought into compliance with special use that the horvass will be applying for.
Mayor Protem Shemansky, I'd like City Attorney George Saylor to address that.
Okay. If we do that, then you're not approving the split, or you're making a contingent upon that second part of it, which would upset the sale that is being planned for the property owner. We did receive communication, I didn't even know that a special use permit application had been picked up, but I know that that is being pursued. Zach and I talked about this today, and we didn't see any reason that the planning commission won't approve the special use, which is going to be a contractor storage building. And so what we're suggesting is the approval without any additional language. That's what's necessary for the property owners to be able to close on their sale.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments? Ms. Rezak? Okay, great. Thank you. Heather, do you want to take?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
We now return to citizen comments. So are there any citizens in the, in attendance who would like to say a few words? Hearing none, we'll move on. Did you want to step forward? Still time. No? Yes?
We don't know who you're talking to.
Pardon me?
We don't know who you're talking to.
I was talking to you.
Well, I just want to say that I walked on the River Walk today with everyone, and I.
You can step up to the podium.
I'm talking to Matt, and I moved on River Street. We walked on the River Walk today, and I just thought it was a real productive meeting. I thought it was positive. I thought we were able to communicate. It was nice that Jeff McCula and his people were there, and I just, I just, hopefully we'll come up with an, a plan of action and start moving forward with, you know, how we can proceed to address some of these issues that has been a concern for many people. So I just thought it was nice, very nice.
It was a nice walk.
It was a very nice walk. Lots of things were pointed out, and understanding of why certain things happen, and so hopefully we just can continue and move forward and get some things done. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Matt. Any other comments? No? We'll move on to officials and staff. Ed?
I don't have anything at this time, thank you, Your Honor.
George Saylor?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Heather Caffey?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Well, Jeff McCula.
I have nothing, Your Honor, but you.
Sean Millerton.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Zach Somsol, planning and zoning. Fire Chief Cameron.
I just want to say, I think we had our first, one of our little members in the station, believe it is paramedic, we're running a malice paramedic. We have one last guy who just started the, the program. So we should have granted.
That's, well, great, thanks. Police Chief?
I'm here, Lady, Your Honor, thank you.
Who did I miss? Water Department? No? Okay. Nothing?
I would just mention that it is greatly appreciated, the vote itself, for the adjustments in sick time for the non-union employee. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. City staff worked on that, so that's great. All right, let's see. Councilmembers. Mr. Bachman.
Nothing, thank you.
Newest member.
I just wanted to echo that same thing. The River Walk was really, it was really nice to walk and talk and just be together and learn and grow together like that, so. Thank you.
Sullivan.
I actually have a couple things, because I wasn't here last week, so I would still like to get on the agenda the Safe Bill contract and review other agencies that are willing to fulfill those contracts. And I don't know if we have to put it on a work session or, or what, about how we pick the boards and commissions. I think that needs to be reviewed on how we do that, because I feel like in the past it's just been like a popularity contest. And then I also, I don't know, I don't know who to address this to, so it came to my attention that the, the police department, when driving around, they're supposed to report to either the DPW or the city garage when lawns are too long and need to be cut. I don't know if that's, that's true or not.
That's typically the practice where we're doing white enforcement, if we see long grass, we notify the DPW, usually Kathy Boyle.
Okay. Well, I feel like that's like a horrible use of your time, to report grass cuttings. I mean, why, if the guys in the DPW trucks are driving around, why can't they just have a notepad? Like, why is it? I mean, you already have blight. We hired Safe Bill to help with the blight, which, that's not happening, I mean. And then also, I had a question about the beach flags, like, why do you guys do that?
It's something that we've always done, something the city asked the police department to do, I, I believe. It's, how we got into that is before my time. I know that we maintain the beach flags, we put them up every morning, we try to maintain them throughout our shift, which is sometimes difficult.
But don't you guys clean the beaches in the morning? Like, I don't understand why they would do it if you're already out there. I don't, it doesn't make sense to me.
I think we've had conversations on this, and the issue is that after 3 o'clock, there's no one around to maintain the flags.
And we also don't staff it out on weekends.
And, and it's a public safety issue, so previously, previous city.
System than have somebody go out there and do a flag?
Well, there, there might be, but that's a different issue than your question. The question was, why is the police department doing it? That was assigned by a previous city manager, because it's a public safety issue, and the Public Safety Department was assigned that responsibility.
So can we look into getting something different to where they don't have to do that?
We certainly can.
And then what about the grass cuttings? Like, I just, I think that's ridiculous, that they have to report grass.
Well, I, I do believe that the Public Works Department, if they notice tall grass, also puts it on the list, but if there's a particularly egregious thing that the officer jots down, it's, it's just, everybody, we don't work in silos here at the city, we don't have enough staff and personnel to do that. So if they happen to notice one that's very long, it's an easy thing for them to just shoot a message over to Kathy or Jeff in case they missed it. And so it's a collaborative effort to try to keep the neighborhoods looking good and make sure that people can be enforcement with, with the weed ordinance.
I agree with you that it's a collaborative effort, but if it's just falling on them to report it, then.
Well, I don't think it is just falling on them. The, the Public Works Department also takes note of when they see long grass, we get citizen complaints, so there's multiple eyes on that particular issue. And I think if it was an issue, Police Chief Glass would bring it up with Jeff McCula, and they would address it.
Okay.
Well, in my time, we used to, they could even lock the bathrooms and open the bathrooms more than you thought.
True.
I mean, we always.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, okay, I'm just, I'm done.
I will say something, Councilmember Sullivan, myself and coordinating with Mr. McCula, we just started exploring possible alternative options for safety at the beach through a safety organization. And again, we're just in the, the talks phase, we're just trying to educate what options are out there. Once we determine there might be a path to go, we'll talk about how to fund it, but[1594.41]
Once we determine there might be a path to go, we'll talk about how to fund it, but we are starting to explore and look at other options.
I just feel like there's better use of your guys' time than driving around looking for brush, especially when we threw the blight problem on you too, on top of that, and then we hired Safe Bill that was going to, you know, help with the blight, and they don't. I mean, I don't even think he's ever even called you about a blight issue, as far as I know. I mean, okay, I'm, I'll be done.
I understand.
That's all, I'm done for now.
Okay. Ms. Pontiac?
I just had one question. Is there a start date for Campbell?
I did speak with Mr. Gamble last week, late in the week. He is very much shooting to be up here by start date no later than the 13th. I do have a voicemail from him that came in when I was on the road, I need to call him tomorrow. It's possible it could be earlier than that, but that's what he's shooting for, is the 13th of September at this point. If I get additional information, I'll let council know.
Mr. Grabowski?
Well, you know, I think the four of us that did the walk today learned a lot about the River Street and the River Walk, and what we really need in the agenda of what we have to do with that thing, because there's a lot of mess on that. With boards missing and boards broken and cement falling, and you got the trees, a lot of stuff to do. So, I think if, is Jeff, is somebody going to make that list that we compiled today?
Yes.
Okay. We can work on to see where we have to go.
And Councilmember Grabowski, we're having our monthly engineering review meeting tomorrow, and we're going to be discussing a process to put together a more formal asset management plan for the River Walk as well, so.
Mr. Shemansky?
I just have one question on the Tree Commission. Have they met and discussed the issue with the poplar tree and the right-of-way on 4th Street?
The Tree Commission met last Monday, and so on a monthly basis, when they meet, the Kathy delivers to them all the tree trimming and removal requests. The chair of the commission then divvies those up amongst the commissioners, and I think they're kind of partnering up and going and looking at them, and then returning those back to Kathy, usually within a week or two.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If, if that tree is approved for cutting, though, I would caution you that, that the DPW does the tree removals or the trimming, and if that tree is, is determined to come down, we won't be doing that until late in the year. Usually, when the leaves are off and we're done with leaf haul is when we do that type of work.
Okay, thank you.
Unless it's a safety hazard.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to thank everybody for attending tonight, and I know I'll get a little smoother on some of these emotions. I did enjoy the walk on the River Walk, I thought it was a great start between ourselves and the DDA and the chamber, and obviously Jeff McCula's group came with his, his two right-hand men, and that was really appreciated to get to know them a little bit. So, I want to thank you for, for bringing part of your staff with you this morning, Jeff. I do have some, some concerns. I have a lot of questions in my mind about the pilot proposal for the HUD housing across